If you would, stand and face the flag. We'll ask George Hack to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, George. The first item on the agenda is we're going to have a public hearing for zoning request RZ-25-137. I will open the floor at this time for anyone that wants to speak on that subject. No one? All right. I'm going to actually close the floor to comments at this time. Concerning this...
Mayor, you actually will need to make a motion and get a second, get approved to open the floor for the public hearing.
Okay. So I'll make a motion at this time to open the floor for comments.
I make a motion.
Motion by Clayton. Second by Billy. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. If no one is wanting to make comments on that subject, I will take a motion and a second. We'll vote on closing the floor at this time for comments.
Make a motion.
Motion by George, second by Clayton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. At this time, Erlene, do we need to go ahead and make a decision on this?
Yes, and there'll actually have to be a determination on certain finding of facts that the council has found to make this decision. There's a certain legal standard that will have to be met. The finding of facts will have to be adopted at the next meeting. So there's going to have to be something in the record in the minutes to be able to reach that legal standard and for those findings to be adopted.
Okay.
May I make a motion that the zone change of RZ-25-137 be granted according to the KRS 100.213, Section A, that the existing zoning classification given to that property is inappropriate and that proposed zoning classification is appropriate?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by George. We have a second by Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Do you get the votes, Lori?
I got you.
Okay.
Lori, we have a really bad echo up here.
I don't...
Is it echoing out there?
Yeah.
Yeah, your all's mics aren't very loud. Or maybe it's just I'm a loud mouth.
All right. Next up on the agenda is approval of the regular meeting minutes from October 6, 2025. Those have previously been sent last week to each member of the council to look over. If there are no additions or questions about the minutes, I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve those as written.
Mr. Mayor, I'll still move.
Motion by Tim. Second by Clayton. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next up, approval and ratification of bills. Again, those were sent out last week to, for everyone to look over. If there are no questions or changes to that, I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve those as written.
I make a motion. We approve.
I second.
Motion by Clayton, second by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next up, we have visitors. Before we get started with the Pinnacle group, I understand there's one gentleman that wants to address the council about a street light. Is he okay? Just speak into the microphone there if you will so we can get it on a recording.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to approach you all. My name is Joel Jones. I live on McDonald Road, house number 392. I come before you requesting an opportunity to get a street light put near my house because of how dark it is on that road. And I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was your number? 3, what?
392.
What did we do to it?
We can vote on whether to put a street light there or not. We'll have to get in contact with... Trying to think. That should be Warren.
Is that Warren?
I think so, yeah.
Have you talked with your neighbors about it?
I have not. I did mention something...
Yeah, I am his neighbor.
Yeah. You have.
I'm his neighbor.
He's down the street from me as well.
Does that mean we can bill it to George and Denny? Is that how that works?
Well, I make a motion that we put one there.
Okay. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Billy.
Can we do that without going out there to look at it? Can we make a motion on that immediately to do that? To put in a light?
Yeah, we do normally. We just get either KU or Warren to go out there and spot it and look at it and...
Can that motion include to amend the budget in order to include this street light?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Thank you.
So we've got a motion by Clayton, a second by...
Second?
Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Next up, we have the folks from Pinnacle here report the findings of the feasibility study for the Sports Plex, Health Plex. Brittany?
Good evening. First, I want to thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to explore the possibility of putting this transformative center in Litchfield. As we've progressed in our planning with the Recreation Center Committee, we've made an important change that reflects the broader vision for the facility. What began as a concept for a recreation center has evolved into something that we feel can be a little more impactful, and we're now referring to it as a health and wellness center. We feel like that name better captures the full scope of what the facility will do, not just offer recreation, but activities that will improve overall wellness of community members. So the center will be a place where families can gather, seniors can stay active, youth can engage in safe and enriching activities, and individuals can pursue healthier lifestyles. It'll serve as a hub for fitness, education, community programming, and preventive health initiatives. In short, it will be a cornerstone for a healthier, more connected Grayson County. To ensure the vision is both feasible and financially sound, we engage with Pinnacle Indoor Sports, which I know you guys are aware of, and they're a nationally recognized firm with expertise in these types of facilities. They've conducted a comprehensive feasibility study and a financial model, which I'll let them go over with you. We do have representatives from here tonight, from Pinnacle here tonight. They're going to be able to answer some of your all's questions. And we are asking the city council to make a decision regarding your commitment to the Health and Wellness Center this evening. We've been made aware of some extremely significant funding that we have the opportunity to apply for that would help with the capital needs for the project if we were able to secure any of that funding. However, the turnaround time is tight, and we would have to apply by the end of this month. In order to move forward, we would need a formal commitment from the city council in the form of a written resolution in support of the project. Your decision tonight will determine whether we can pursue that funding and take the next step toward making the Health and Wellness Center a reality. We believe it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to invest in the health of our community members and also gives us the opportunity to grow Litchfield. I want to thank you again for your time, your leadership, your dedication to the people of Litchfield and to Grayson County, and I'm going to turn it over to Jared Karns and Tav Brockman with Pinnacle.
Thank you, Brittany.
Well, thanks, everybody, for taking the time to hear our presentation and asked us some questions. My name is Jared Karns with Pinnacle Sports. This is Tav Brockman, also with Pinnacle Sports, and we are, two of us as part of the larger team handled a majority of the financial modeling as well as the feasibility analysis. In terms of our goals, we have a quick presentation for you guys tonight where we want to provide a high-level overview of the scope of work completed, which includes a market feasibility study, the financial model, and then also go through the, just real quick, market findings. Want to review the facility layout from the recommended facility in the report, review the financial model from an overview perspective, talk about next steps, and then finally open it up for any questions.
Could you possibly hold the microphone? You're really tall and very far away from it.
I know. That'll make him tall enough. As far as our company, Pinnacle Sports, as Brittany kind of alluded to, we are one of the industry leaders in development of indoor and outdoor sports complexes. Our expertise is in market feasibility, financial modeling, economic and sports tourism impacts, facility design and development services, facility operations, and facility revenue optimization services as well. Company itself, Pinnacle Sports, was founded in 2000, and we have over 85 years of combined staff expertise across everybody within Pinnacle. In terms of the scope of work completed, I guess step one, you could say, was a market feasibility study where we assessed the project viability based on market factors, analyzed demand, competition, and target markets. We took a look and examined the relevant industry trends, and we provided recommendations on facility size and mix. While we were working on the market feasibility study and then after we finalized the market feasibility study, we got into the financial modeling, which is where we developed the financial projections to assess the viability of the facility, as well as we modeled the revenue, expenses, and capital costs associated with the development. When we were going through the market feasibility study, we noticed that there are six key factors that emerged to indicate that there is demand and opportunity for a new indoor sports facility in Grayson County in the Litchfield market. Those six factors are that, one, it enhances the overall quality of life for not only Litchfield residents, but also Grayson County as a whole. It provides a hub for varied sports, recreation, and wellness programming. The facility also can double as an event center space for events, trade shows, health classes, and non-sports-related activities. The facility would operate year-round regardless of temperature or seasons. It would potentially stimulate ancillary development such as restaurants, retail establishments, and hotels acting as a catalyst for those. And then finally, as the sixth key factor, land is available for the proposed project. So I think it's coming up on the screen, but I also have it in front of you. For the recommended development from the feasibility study, the facility would be a 50,000 indoor square foot, 50,000 square foot indoor facility with two basketball courts and three volleyball courts, which is on the right side of that picture where you see the orange and the bluish-purple. Then the court space as well could also be used for footsaw, pickleball, mat sports, and other cheerleading, other programming. On the left side of the picture, where it looks like an aerial view of the soccer field, that is a 180-foot by 80-foot synthetic turf soccer, or synthetic turf field. That turf space would also be recommended to accommodate batting cages that would drop down or walk down or walk off the wall. Also included in the facility around the sports spaces is an indoor walking track, food and beverage, and seating area, and then flex space, which includes community room, classroom, meeting rooms. For the financial model, this slide and what you see in front of you is just the overview slide of a much more in-depth deliverable that we sent to the project team that has everything laid out in terms of revenues, expenses, and capital costs, but this is the overview slide to kind of run through the results of the financial model. And so it's a four-year financial forecasting model. It's important to note, though, that the model assumes no debt service right now, no laying costs or property taxes, so it's unleveraged. The revenue and expenses projected for indoor sports and related programming are included in the model, and the financial trajectory shows a typical industry ramp-up period for an indoor sports facility. Taking a look at the revenue and expenses on the left side, you'll notice that total projected revenue grows from approximately $10,000 in year one, which is limited preopening activity because you're not opening at the very beginning of the year, you're most likely opening in the fall, to $750,000 by year four, which is what we would consider to be stabilization for a type of facility like this one. The cost of goods sold rise proportionately with revenue, 26, almost $27,000 in year one to $229,000 in year four. And operating expenses as well grow from $258,000 in year one to $426,000 in year four. Taking a look at the bottom of the overview, the net operating results of this model, year one was a loss of $275,000. Year two was a loss of $171,000, and then in year three, there's a surplus of $11,000 and year four, a surplus of $96,000. So overall, the facility from an operational standpoint would break even between years two and three of full operation. For recommended next steps, as Brittany kind of alluded to, it would be to evaluate the most viable mix of funding sources, whether that be, we have a couple options up on the screen and then in front of you, traditional debt, potentially local government contributions, foundation contributions, county or municipal bonds, state or federal grants, and sponsorships are some of the ways that some of the funding has come together for a facility like this one. But for next steps, it would be determining what's the most viable mix of those funding sources that potentially cover the cost of development. That's a really high-level overview of all the work that we did, but we wanted to know you wanted to open it up for some questions, and Tav and I will answer them as best we can if there are any, and if we don't know it, we can probably get ahold of somebody who does.
Who all is going to be involved in this once it's built? Who all is going to be involved in paying the debt load?
So right now, the financial model that you had in front of you doesn't show debt, and so that's one thing that as we start to get into that, we can show that in the model and show how that affects the bottom line, but that would have to be something that would be determined, you know, in terms of if there's need for subsidy or... Oh, go ahead.
So based on the square footage and the cost per square foot to build the facility, based on information from Pinnacle, we're anticipating $10 million cost to construct the facility. That also includes, it's $9 million for construction of the building, $1 million for all the equipment and everything to go inside of the building. At this point, the city of Litchfield, Grayson County Fiscal Court, the Grayson County Healthcare Foundation, and Litchfield Tourism have been involved in conversations about funding. We're at that point, what came first, the chicken or the egg? Nobody wants to be the first to commit, I feel like, so we really need a commitment that, yes, we think operationally we can sustain this, and if we think we can operationally sustain this long-term, then we can go out and start to look for funding, apply for funding, and try to find donors and other contributions for the capital project. But that's kind of where we're at.
Well, the county, if the county judge changes sometimes and the mayor, whatever changes, the finances, they may decide that they don't want to be involved in that anymore. What kind of debt load is that going to put on the city of Litchfield for that when we have a lot? Our taxpayers pay out quite a bit right now, and we've got a limited bunch of people in this city that has the finances to put in to get to do things.
Clayton, I think that what we're supposed to be asking right now is to the Pinnacle, the ones who did the study, that, I mean, Pinnacle can't help us with funding questions right now.
No, but she's standing there, and that's what I'm talking about.
She can.
I anticipate we would need written agreements.
Contractual agreements.
Some kind of contractual agreement type that affirms that those organizations will commit a certain amount for X number of years or whatever that looks like.
That's really, that's really putting it hard on our taxpayers here in the community, the amount of people that we have. That's what people don't understand till you get to the age that some of the people are, and how many of them is going to be using it? I'm thankful for the ones that could, but how many is going to be using it? And I just, I'm concerned with our citizens base right here in our city limits of what would, kind of a load would be put on them. And I'm not saying for anybody else, I'm just saying that it is rough on a lot of people. Some people can pay it, some people can't. I go to a facility and I work out. I work out five, six days a week out there. Matter of fact, I got a knot on my head where I was working out and slipped, but anyway, while, I know it's a, the equipment and stuff that goes into it costs quite a bit, even for an 8,000-square-foot facility, and so, and keeping it up. And so I'm just concerned with our people.
Well, at this point, let's limit it to questions that we may have for them. That's why these guys are here to answer questions.
I have a question. Are these real-world numbers? And if so, what facilities are they based on?
Yeah, so a lot of our, and the document that we delivered, is all the years of data that we've collected that is proprietary in terms of how we get to our projections, but what we do is we take the data that we have and we combine it with what we had, what we heard during our conversations in terms of what exists in the area, what the opportunity is, what the need is, and we can cater that then specifically to this area, you know, so we then make it...
I'm talking revenue, sir.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, so the revenue is based on the projections.
Is there a facility that you can point to in rural Kentucky that are meeting these numbers or exceeding these numbers?
Our company has worked with a number of facilities in Kentucky, and in a former life, I was park superintendent in Hopkinsville, and we built a very similar facility to this. And matter of fact, that's how I became, I've retired now, and I'm working with Pinnacle, and that's, that's one of the reasons that when we talked, I said, yes, let's get together because I liked what they said their numbers were on. The Hopkinsville Sports Plex is in its sixth year now. Now, it had three years of, two years of COVID, three years of impact of COVID, so you kind of got to...
Certainly.
Yeah, those are, that's unusual. The numbers were met. They're, they're almost at a break-even spot now. And that, and again, a very, very similar facility to this one. We also worked with Madisonville, a little bit bigger facility than this, but, and we also did a study for Paducah for the convention center there when they were looking to figure out what to do with their facility.
How's the Madisonville facility doing as far as...
Everything that I've heard so far, they're doing very well.
Are they generating revenue?
Oh, yeah. That's called...
So did Pinnacle do their study?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Pinnacle did Madisonville study, Pinnacle did Hopkinsville study, and did one, again, kind of just for tourism in Paducah.
Do you have a cost on that like prior six years ago on that facility?
Oh, yeah. It was 5.6 million. So it's gone up 50%.
What's it going to be five years from now?
Your guess is as good as mine, but I don't think any of the prices are going down.
So the survey that went out to our community and that, did you take information from our actual community survey results and implement that into this? This helped you to base decisions on what we, what was feasible to do and what was feasible not to do?
Yes, yeah. And so our process actually, when we were gathering the information, was the survey went out to the community members, which we collected, and we had it in our report, the feedback that we got from that. We also, Tav and myself, came to town and interviewed groups based on sports and other programming areas that they're currently involved in and gathered information from that, and then individual conversations as well, where we reached out to coaches, municipal, you know, anybody who could, anybody who was willing to provide additional feedback.
I guess I was just a little surprised that indoor soccer on a turf field was included in this possible rec center, and...
Who decided that?
A multipurpose, like tennis part was not, because tennis is much more prevalent in our community than soccer. Not, nothing against soccer, but I just know for a fact that that community is much larger than our soccer community.
Yeah, and soccer, you know, when we had the conversations, the rec soccer league exists in the area with participants, and, you know, they have leagues, I believe, in the fall and the spring. Then, you know, high school also has soccer for teams that they offer that are looking for places to go indoors. But really, when it came down to it, everything in the area was a need. Everything was an opportunity. It's just really, from a bottom-line perspective, when you look at a turf field, you can have, you know, 20 kids going at a time hypothetically, you know, depending on the size of the teams, where when you look at tennis, it's a very specific court, you only have four people going at a time per court, and the ROI just wasn't there based on the parameters of the study, you know, the budget that we were kind of given in terms of what we thought the facility could or what could be funded. And tennis wasn't, in our report, wasn't a no, it was a, we recommend as a future phase, considered as tennis continues to grow.
Even if it was a multipurpose, multi, I guess, purpose court where...
Yeah, the courts...
More than just tennis could be played on that, that seems to be more feasible than indoor soccer with a turf field or a turf floor and batting cages.
Well, on the turf field, you can have soccer, football, you can have, we have the batting cages there, which is a little bit of the revenue as well, and then you can also do other things on it. And you can do that on the courts as well, but you can't really transfer an indoor tennis court to basketball as easily. It's just, it's a different style of court that's required. And, you know, tennis, pickleball, you can also play pickleball on the courts, but tennis, pickleball, and then it would really just be training purposes for basketball and for volleyball. You couldn't really play games on them, or you couldn't have tournaments on top of the indoor tennis courts.
And is your financial model, I see down at the bottom, it says staff and payroll expenses. How many staff were you anticipating to be employed?
Three full-time staff.
Three full-time staff?
At the facility, yeah, and then part-time staff is associated with the revenue generation.
Does that include custodial workers?
That is a, that is a fee in our, or that's a expense that we do incorporate into the...
That, so this is three full-time?
Yep. So you'd have a general manager. You'd have, yep.
And how many part-time?
I'm not sure about the number of part-time. It's, it toggles based on the revenue generation. It's a percentage of the revenue.
And we don't have a number for custodial staff on that?
No, we just have the overall expense. Yeah.
And one more thing. Does this financial model include the ample parking?
It does include the cost for parking, yes.
This, so this has our parking lot included on it also?
The overall, yeah, cost of the, cost of the development is, includes the, includes parking. And then by our calculations, it was about five to eight acres would be required for, to include parking and water retention and...
Well, this have a workout room in it, weights, treadmills, all kinds of workout equipment?
That's a good question, yes. So not like you're thinking in terms of a 24-hour fitness where you can go in and work out?
Yes, that's, that's what I'm looking for.
So it wouldn't be a fitness center, but it would have weights and other fitness equipment that you could incorporate into fitness classes or speed and agility training or performance training? training, or performance training, and things like that.
But it won't be 24 hours a day?
It would not be 24 hours a day, as it is right now.
Well, see, I go to one that's 24 hours a day, I can go in anytime I want to.
Right.
If I can't sleep, a lot of times I can't, I go out there at three o'clock in the morning, go in, work out with my buddy, and...
I don't go out there at three o'clock.
No, but you've been out there about midnight, one o'clock in the morning, too. And, uh, there's times that, uh, I do if I can't sleep or something, and, uh, I want to, I go out there and I work out, and I, and we have people that train.
Yep.
Out there. We have training officers that trains us, we've got, uh, high-quality training officers out there, and so, that's one thing that I, I want to have, and I like to have, and that's one thing that, uh, so, you know, these, these guys that work with us, they train people all the time.
Mm-hmm.
They're top-notch, and so, are there going to be any training officers and things involved in this? Who's going to pa-, how much are they going, who's going to get paid, who's going to decide that?
Yeah, so, yes, there would be training aspects of the facility, especially with the turf field, you, you can dual-purpose that turf field to do, uh, group adult fitness on there, you know, group, group training, youth especially, you can do, you know, group training, strength training.
But is it 24/7?
It would not be 24/7 as it is right now. That is something we could analyze, but that increases the square footage, because we'd have to have actual dedicated fitness center space that's shut off from the rest of the facility for that 24-hour access.
Well, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, we're not looking at building something to compete with the local gym?
That was not our intention.
That's not our intention, so, that's, 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 I can't see this hurting the business at that local gym, I don't think, I don't think that's possible.
Different purpose completely.
Different, yeah.
Seating, seating looks tight on your proposal, especially if multiple events.
Yep.
And your parking would be, at a minimum, also for events.
Yep.
So, I, I see no bleachers, I see just seats for teams to sit on, where are we putting the people?
So, for what you're looking at in the, on that CAD drawing, does not have the seating on it in terms of drawn out and permanent bleachers, what we would recommend is tip-and-roll bleachers, which are stainless steel bleachers that you can tip and roll, and then, so the storage that's on there would incorporate storing the, uh, storing the bleachers when you put them away for, you know, if you need extra ones, you bring them out for larger events, but I think they seat 35 people on them, and they're about, uh, I forget how long, but, how long?
And, and giving again, as a comparison, since someone asked about another facility, and, and I'll go back to the Hopkinsville facility, just as Jared said, tip-and-roll in there, and, and the beauty of that is, it lets you use multiple things, you don't have, you don't have something in place that you can't move, so when, when you want to make it a multipurpose place. And we had tip-and-roll in there for 1,100 people.
What's the normal hours of those facilities that you know of?
Uh, well, uh, with, you know, it's, it's all day, um, that you can have it open, but obviously during the day, you're going to see more pickleball, or with this one, with the indoor track, you're going to probably see more people walking the indoor track. Peak hours is what we consider to be, you know, when everybody's going to be in there, it's going to be the most busy, is from about 3:00 PM to about 10:00 PM. Sometimes you can go till 11 with adults, but not, you know, not with the youth, obviously. And then on the weekends, it would be 8:00 AM to, you know, 5:00 PM.
Any other questions for these gentlemen, or any of all the council? Thank you, guys.
Yep, thank you.
Is anyone else that's here want to come up and speak of their support, non-support? Mr. Meredith, Senator Meredith?
Good evening, I guess for the record, uh, my name is Steve Meredith, I'm state senator for the, uh, 5th district of Kentucky, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on behalf of this, uh, project, but, uh, also, thank you for the opportunity to get to speak on it. This is kind of deja vu for me, because I've been here before. My family moved here in 1961, and, so I've kind of got seven decades of history for Litchfield and Grayson County. And Clayton, you may remember, I know Tootie does as well, back in the 60s, we had a group, a civic group called the J.C.'s, who, uh...
Yep.
Wanted to do something for our community, for our young people, and they were proposing building a community center that has some recreational activities, a lot of excitement. Uh, this is pretty good fundraising, but for some reason, that project died and the money disappeared. 20 years later, a guy named Terry Benel, who was president of Litchfield Deposit Bank, decided he would try to build a YMCA in Litchfield. Again, a lot of excitement from our community, a lot of interest, it died. Roll it forward another 20 years, and our hospital decided to take on this project. And surprisingly, we're going to build a comparable-sized facility, almost 50,000 square feet, but ours, uh, was going to have an indoor swimming pool, a big-sized swimming pool, so we could have a swim team for the high school, but also have a, kind of a lazy river-type of pool as well, basketball courts, running track, exercise rooms, the whole complement of, of health and care services. You may ask, why would the hospital want to get invited, or get involved in this? Very simply, uh, the old, the old city pool was failing, it had to be replaced, so we saw this as an option to do something and get an indoor pool. Secondly, recruiting physicians is a whole lot like recruiting industry, got to appreciate, doctors can go anywhere in the world to practice medicine, so you have to do things to entice them to come to your community. And I'm proud to say, in my 30 years as CEO, I've never lost a physician that I've tried to recruit, and I think that's Mr. Meriwether's experience as well, but I lost a lot of spouses. Hospital sold itself, doctors always say, didn't expect to find this here, but then when they started looking around as what we had to offer their families, it became a different story. Now, this project, and this is 2000-something, I often forget the date, but was a, an eight million dollar project. We did an aggressive fundraising campaign, and we got commitment for six million. I asked our board to commit to borrow a million dollars, they said they would if the city would borrow a million dollars, and the city said, no.
I think it was more than that.
No, it was not.
I met with you and...
Um, I, I had the numbers, I had the budget, it was not more than that. It was equal, million dollars for hospital, million dollars for the city, really got this project done, but you said no. But instead, three, four years later, we built another pool, multi-million dollar project, that we're going to use three months out of the year. And look at the opportunity we lost for our young people. Now, I'm proud to call this place, uh, my hometown, I truly am. And you look at, again, you go back to the history of this place, Judge Kenneth Goff, we all know very well, shot me in the hallway of the hospital building one day, and he said, you know, back in the 50s, Grayson County wasn't anything more than a white ghetto, speaking to the poverty that we saw in Grayson County. 60s was transformational for this community, built the nursing homes, and before that, we had, uh, built the hospital, uh, and we had, uh, industrial recruitment that was heavy. From 1960 into 1972, the per capita income in this community increased by almost 300%. Before that, we had been taught predominantly agricultural. 1979, we, uh, built a new hospital facility, well, it's still called the new hospital. You know, when that hospital was built in 1948, it was a, it was an 8,000 square foot facility, 20 beds. 10 years later, had an expansion project, had 20 more, 14,000 square foot facility. When you moved to this facility in 1979, it was 56,000 square feet. Today, it's almost 300,000 square feet, and that took a great deal of nerve and a great deal of courage on the part of leadership in this community, because they had to borrow heavily to do that as well. But look at the financial impact that this has had on this community. And while I appreciate the work these gentlemen done, one thing that they had included in that study is the economic impact. People from other communities are going to come here, they're going to eat at our restaurants, they're going to buy gasoline, they're going to stop our retail establishments. This will create jobs that are not part of their forecast, and you didn't ask them to do that. You know, when I was a hospital CEO and had to sell this community, I think it was a strong sale because I could say, look at us, geographically, we're located almost right in the middle of the state. I mentioned UPS, you know why UPS is in Louisville? In part because of weather, but the biggest reason is, they're within three hours of 80% of the population in the United States. So, I'd say prospective physicians, you're an hour away from Louisville, two hours from Nashville, two hours from Lexington, you're close to Indianapolis, you're close to, uh, St. Louis, we have a great central location here that should create jobs in the future. But I'd also mention the quality of life that we have here, certainly important. We got a, a parkway that bisects our entire county, that's going to be connected between two interstates, if we will take advantage of it. Got two recreational lakes, 5,000 acres, that draws heavy tourism. So, we have most things that a lot of communities would beg for, but yet, we're not taking advantage of those things. You know, over the last decade, we've seen loss of jobs. Now, I hate to have to go through the list of factors we've lost over the last decade. Result for the first time in, um, I don't know how many years, decades, literally, Litchfield proper lost population. So, we've lost jobs. You may have heard recently that because of the proposed Medicaid cuts, that our hospital is listed as one of the 35 potentially closing the state. If that were to happen, I guarantee you it won't happen, because we've got very strong administration over there, but if it were, can you imagine what the economic impact would be on this community?
Devastated.
It wouldn't just, it wouldn't just be a loss of medical service, it would be devastating economically, it truly would. So, how can we lift them up? You look at our social economic profile, and we look more like eastern Kentucky than new central Kentucky, in spite of all the assets we have going forth, things we're going forth. Eastern Kentucky, literally, 20% of our population lives in poverty, 31.5% of our children live in poverty. What are we going to do to change that dynamic? You know, Art Twain said that when the world comes to end, he wanted to be in Kentucky, because everything happens 20 years later. I'm going to think that's the same as, as Litchfield. You realize we have 6,000 people a day who leave Grayson County to work elsewhere? That mean, what are we doing to create jobs? What are you doing to change this dynamic? We're losing students in our school system. Now, part of that's because of homeschooling, but part is because we've lost population as well. In spite of everything we have to offer, we are a struggling community. I represent Meade, Breckridge, Grayson, Butler, and Ohio Counties. And I can tell you, on more than one occasion, mayors from the cities in those counties have said, what's happened to Litchfield? That used to be the go-to city, that's who everybody else wanted to be, what's happened to them? I'll ask you folks the same thing, a lot of the statistics I gave you, lost jobs, lost population, increase in poverty, we've got struggles greatly. And I appreciate, we have a segment of our community that, uh, doesn't want to change. In fact, they like to say, uh, we like being Mayberry. And we remind you that, um, Mayberry was a TV show, also remind you that Barney Fife left Mayberry to find a better job in Raleigh.
Now, he worked here in Litchfield.
How many of our people, young people, have left this community because we didn't have economic opportunity for them? I guarantee you, the number of kids we've had gone to medical school that did not come back here, our medical school has to be four times the size it is today, if we're willing to make an investment in this community. And I failed to mention, we've got some of the worst health outcomes in this state. Another reason that hospitals are interested in doing this is, during the wintertime, because our facility is so big, we'd have dozens of people who would come to walk the hallways. That's how they get their exercise. So, here's another opportunity for them. We've got to improve their health population, because it's creating a financial burden on businesses and government that we can't afford anymore. So, what can we do to change this dynamic? Now, this project is not going to be the solution to all the problems, but it's the first step in the process, because it takes multiple steps to improve your community. Very proud that Representative Samara Haver and I have been able to get $10 million to the vocational school, the new one. Got $10 million to expand the community college, but it's going to mean very little if we can't create jobs in this community, bring young people back, which we should, and that's how you get your revenue, through occupational tax.
Amen.
How you going to do it? Every factor we've lost is a blow to this community, but certainly, bail cheese right now, how long it will take to recover from that depends on us. What are we going to offer people that's different from every other community in this state? Say we get $10 million appropriation to build a new industrial park, what have we done? And, now, I really, lots of people don't like to hear the truth sometimes, but this is the truth. I'm here in the city because I've been approached about making an appropriation request for our budget. We are 78 days away from our next, uh, general assembly, it's a budget year, and I'd be very honored, very proud to make an appropriation request. How much will that be? Well, first I tell you, I can't promise you anything, other than I'll give you the darnedest, and I think of past successes, what we've done, the vocational school, the college, and with the proposed industrial park, I think we stand a good chance of getting an appropriation, we stand a good chance of getting none, if this community is not behind it. I'm willing to put the time and effort into it to accomplish it, but the worst thing can happen is, I get it, and then have to say, sorry, we don't want it. Because I guarantee you, not only is that an embarrassment, but also maybe the last time we ever get an appropriation request from the state. So, I'm asking you again, what are we going to do to change this dynamic, to make this community everything it should be? We still got tremendous potential, tremendous assets, but you've got to take risks sometimes.
Amen.
And I don't see this mean this is big of a risk. I truly believe, build it and they will come. You know, I don't care whether you're a state senator, a state representative, a mayor or city council, we have one job, and that's to improve the quality of life for the people we serve. What are we doing, what are we willing to do, what can investments we willing to make? I think their projection is very conservative, but again, it doesn't take into account the economic impact this could have on jobs and tax revenue, and you need to take that into account. But if not this project, then what? What's your all's idea? That's certainly entertaining. I encourage you, take a hard look at this, I'd hate for it to be 20 more years before we look at another opportunity to do this, if we get that opportunity 20 years from now. Also, we forget, communities are living organisms. You're either growing, or you're dying, there's no standing still. And what I'm seeing right now is, we're not growing to the extent that we should, so please, give this serious consideration. Please improve the quality of life of those people, not just in Litchfield, this entire county. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
So, anyone else? Anyone else that'd like to address the council?
Good evening, uh, my name's Greg Bernard, I'm the owner and president of Mid Park here in Litchfield. I'm also a, been a tennis player for 30 years, over 30 years, and I'm also a tennis parent. Um, I'm going to look at the room real quick, I think I'm still comfortable in saying that I speak for most of the kids in here, and certainly most of the families, in expressing my disappointment in the feasibility studies finding for not including tennis. Now, I admit, I'm not familiar on whether or not these governmental entities have to abide by a feasibility study, what they say, if it's gospel, or is it just a suggestion? If it's the latter, I hope you all consider it and treat it as such. So, our community does have the opportunity to build a top-of-the-line facility that's on par with one that we would have to drive an hour-plus to go, um, use. Great examples have been cited, we've already talked about the Hopkinsville Sportsplex, they use their space, uh, with multipurpose courts for volleyball and basketball, soccer, baseball, and more. Buchanan Park in Bowling Green, where I played a tennis tournament this weekend, it's a fantastic blueprint for what could be built here. If this facility that we're talking about is built where the baseball fields are, where the softball fields are, a disc golf course, walking trails, and the aquatic center, they're already there, Litchfield could have a jewel of a park by adding this multi-sport, multipurpose facility. Now, the Grayson County tennis community has been a supporter of this project from the beginning, no other sporting group supporting this project has filled up this room every time the Sportsplex has been discussed, like our local tennis community has. We have not asked for a dedicated tennis facility, we have asked to be included in a multi-sport facility. Modern building projects make indoor tennis's inclusion possible, to go back to the Buchanan Park example, the portable Teraflex flooring, uh, makes it possible for Buchanan Park's dedicated tennis courts to be converted to basketball courts and volleyball courts, pickleball courts, and they can even convert it to a football and soccer field. And so, I'll close with this, tennis is a lifetime sport, my doubles partners in USDA leagues and tournaments over the past few years have ranged in age from 15 to 68. This summer, I've seen players at arcades courts with ages in range from 40, or from 4 to 60. 4 to 60. If broad appeal to a wide range of ages is part of this facility's mission, indoor tennis can and should be a part of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Ms. Trey.
Come on up. Thanks for having us tonight. So, as Greg said, you look around the room, tennis is the, has a heart of the community here. I mean, we've got one of the most vocal groups that you have out here. So I started my playing tennis when I was in 7th grade, so that's close on 20 years now there. So tennis is, you know, a lot of people think pickleball has taken over tennis, but if you look at the numbers, that's just not the truth anymore. So last year, we had in 2024 in the United States, 25.7 million tennis players out there that are currently playing. So as in what Councilwoman Ms. Haycraft there said, you know, tennis in the Grayson County area, I think is even stronger than most communities for the rural area there. So we've got a very active tennis program, but that 25.7 million that you're looking at across the United States, while pickleball has, you know, been a big growing factor, that's 1.9 million up under 4, that's 8% growth year-over-year. The biggest part about that, though, is 1.3 of that 1.9 million is youth underneath 35 years. That's your goal. I mean, we're talking about Mr., Senator Meredith was talking about investing in your youth there. That's the group that you want to hit, is the parents that's got 35 years old. I'm 32 at this point, so I've got a three-year-old that I've already taken out. Greg was a year off, actually. I had a three-year-old in the tennis camp this year, so we've had kids, you know, there's about 40 kids in some of the camps, but mine was three years old, and then all the way up to, we've got the ladder league that we play every tennis night. So if you want to see a couple of has-beens play against the young guys, feel free to come out and watch us on every Tuesday night there. So, you know, it's, like Greg said, it's a lifelong sport out there. The Grayson County tennis program has always been the overachiever. You know, there's no other, you know, there's no other high school team that's won more regional tournaments than Grayson County, and that's thanks to the support of mainly Coach Vincent and the community, and just being, always having the back of the tennis community. But, you know, we're playing with, against, you know, Owensboro and some of the other teams where, they have indoor facilities, Bowling Green, stuff like that. So that's with us not having the investment that some of them have. I mean, there's players in this room here that's going to be driving to Owensboro, Louisville, E-Town to take lessons, where if we got two coaches with the clients that's moved from Louisville, then, you know, anytime during the winter, we're going to be able to, you know, put that facility in there. So you've got a great environment here with this group here, and this is just a small portion of it there. So I know that, as, you know, we're looking at the feasibility on it, I think that Grayson County is probably underrepresented on that for the tennis side, because it's always going to be a, you know, there's always going to be a support there for it. So thanks again for having us tonight. Like I said, I'm just here to advocate for the tennis program with Grayson County, if this program moves forward there. So, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Hello. Can you all hear me? Thank you. So I'll be really brief, and thank you for letting me speak. So my name's Angela Gibson. I am a pharmacist, so I'm coming to you from the health and wellness of this county. I've been here, I've been working in this community for 12 years, retail hospital. I've worked alongside with a lot of these individuals here today. So I'm not coming to you with, and I don't use the word bias, but I'm not coming to you with a bias for a sport. My kids have played football, track and field, pole vault, soccer, you name it, my kids have done it. We've traveled to states, we've traveled to Texas, Oklahoma, we've traveled way more than an hour and a half for this. But I'm coming to you for the well, the health and wellness of our community. I have said on the Public Health Population Committee since 2018, I have said through community health needs assessments, I know what we're dealing with, we're dealing with addiction, we're dealing with obesity, we're dealing with a lot of wellness issues, you all know that. I mean, I'm looking at individuals who are in healthcare and for our community. I've dealt with, you know, trying to help the hospital recruit physicians, pharmacists, it's like pulling teeth to get pharmacists to come here. Like Senator Meredith, what he said, it's not just about getting them here, it's keeping them here, it's keeping the wives happy, their children happy. I have, you know, worked many years alongside with Brittany and Mr. Meriwether, I just, I cannot express how important this is. And I know we want to look at our sports, and we want to look at tennis, we want to look at football, and we want to look at all these things. But in the end, this is about bringing health and wellness to our community, and staying where we need to be to do that. Keeping the people we need here, keeping them to come back with us, keeping them healthy, I'm keeping our health costs down, we have Owensboro Health here, you know, helping us do that. That's all I wanted to say. I know, you know, from, you know, I think I put my planning and zoning hat on, I put, you know, my master's in business on, I put being a mom on, being a pharmacist, professional, all these things, I cannot think of a single reason that we would not get support for this from you all, and from our county, and from our city, and from everybody. I cannot think of a reason that outweighs that we need this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angela.
Angela also serves as a commissioner on one of our boards.
Yeah.
Pull the mic down. So I'm Carla Stivers, and my husband is back here, Ed. And I'm just coming to you as a business that's already in town. So I am all for health and wellness, or I wouldn't own the only gym that happens to be in town. But the thing that's a little concerning to me is the possibility of duplicating the effort that I put in, and what our family has put in to having a business here, with having pieces of that being granted money, right? So sometimes people say, you know, there's, there's never anything to do in Litchfield. And I heard somebody say, "Well, what you should do is people need to invest their money. They need to start something up." Well, we did that in 2014. As a small business owner, we bought a gym, and we built the complex that's on the bypass, and we're still alive after COVID. Y'all talked about COVID. COVID was ugly. But one thing you may not realize, because if you're not in the gym all the time, you may not like know, but we have senior programming now, we offer senior classes, every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, three of them, every single time we meet. We do community events, we have personal trainers. So we are set up to kind of work and do that where we are right now. So I just kind of wanted to say that, because we did take that leap in 2014 to put a mortgage on our house, to buy business, to build a business, to build a complex, so that we could advance that in Grayson County. And I am all for a sportsplex, so don't get me wrong, I'm all for it. But I'm not for duplicating the efforts that I'm doing right now, because I don't get any money from anybody. I don't get special grants, I don't get special money. If we fail, we fail. In COVID, we almost did, because we were shut down. But we're still alive. So my point is, is that it's almost an unfair thing to say, "We're going to do this over here, where you're going to get money to do it," when I'm a business that's been in business for 11 years in Grayson County, and I get paid if I run my business well. Does that make sense? I'm not getting any grant money, I don't get anything from the government. So I guess I just would, it would be awesome for me, if this was not a competition where you had, everything that I have in my gym, set in another facility. Like, if you're going to have, somebody mentioned weights and that kind of thing, why would you do that when they want tennis? Why would you duplicate what I have, if you could put tennis in? So I guess that's kind of what I wanted to say. I'm all for health and wellness, we do the breast cancer awareness, we do a turkey trial, we try to keep our food pantry stocked. There's a lot of things that we do as a small business in our community, and I would hate to think that we would then be out of business because you're duplicating what I'm already doing. So, this is what I would say.
Carla, thank you, and Ed, for what you do in our community, and just a couple of questions, if you don't care.
Sure, yeah.
Duplication of services, totally agree. We should not, as a city, try to duplicate what you're doing as a small business.
Right.
We shouldn't be in competition. There should be two separate things where both of them could thrive.
I agree.
What are, what are some of your suggestions where you feel there'd be duplication of services?
Well, if you're going to have, like, treadmills and free weights, and you're going to offer classes, that's something that I already do. So see, to me, that would be a duplication. We have personal trainers, we train athletes, we've trained little fellows all the way up to high school level people in our gym, that would be a duplication of services.
What about, like, somebody that does a heating clinic, or a pitching clinic, or something like that?
Well, that's something I don't do.
Okay, fair enough.
I don't do that. You know, it's very specific, like our seniors, and, you know, people may not know, but a lot of our seniors, they have an insurance plan called Silver Sneakers or Renew and Active. So if they're 65 and older, they can come into the gym and have a free membership. They don't even pay anything to use the gym. So we're catering by offering those to our seniors, so that they can come in and use the gym.
And my wife is one of them. She comes out there.
Well, I mean, I've got a lot of them, but they don't, and I'll be honest, we don't make a ton of money on senior reimbursements.
What you're feeling about the walking track?
Excuse me?
As a small business owner, what you're feeling about the walking track?
I don't have a problem with the walking track, I don't have a walking track, but I've got all the treadmills.
Sure. Okay. I think that's very fair.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, yeah, do you, anybody else have questions?
I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, and think back to our previous discussions, I think that we've said all along that we would not have a weight room, workout room, that's not configured in this at all, correct? Brittany?
I don't think we're that close in competition with them, not with the study they would just presented.
Yeah, well, I was just, you know, from my standpoint to you all.
We would never want to take away, we would never want to offer anything that's going to take away from a business that is already here and established. That would be.
Well, I would hope so, I'd hope you would think that way. As a business who has been here, built here, and still continues to run and operate here, because I am, I'm all for the, the sports. I'm all for it, but not if you're going to duplicate what I'm doing.
We do not want to compete with you.
Right.
You keep doing what you're doing.
I mean, because I can't compete with grants. I can't compete with free money, I can't, so.
Thank you, Carla.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, Carla.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Mr. Mayor, I have something to say, if there's no other public comment. World-class cities that pursue excellence make investments in their community. Sometimes those investments are non-quantifiable. What you can gain by attracting businesses, by attracting physicians, attracting industry, creating a culture of fitness within your community, investing in our next generation, in our seniors' health and logitivity, potential increase in tourism. This is an investment. We should weigh the cost of this in what we don't do. So if we don't do that, what is the cost to this community? What if we kick it down the road? We know it's going to be more in the future, if we even get a bite at that apple in the future. So with that being said, I move that we resolve to pursue the research of building a health and wellness center in the city of Litchfield. Is that a motion? It is.
I'll second the motion, if it's a motion.
I second.
I would like for the mayor to.
The question has been called.
Conclude this.
The question has been called.
Well, then, I'm out.
He'll have to entertain. He can make his thing.
Okay.
All right, so, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, you're voting to, to make a resolution that the city continue to pursue.
Yes, sir.
The.
The research.
The research and.
Building a health and wellness center.
Building a health and wellness center. My, my concern with that, and I, I do want to say, as, as mayor, I want to see this, I think it's a great idea, I want to see it happen. If, if we do a resolution, Earlene, I guess what I'm getting at is.
What are the legal repercussions of a resolution?
Because we, we're, we're needing, what we need is a commitment for Steve to pursue money as far as the state legislature.
I think it depends on what type of commitment they're asking for. I don't think there's been a specific commitment. Are you asking the city to commit to research? Are you asking the city to commit to applying for a grant? Are you, I think there's just not enough detail or specifications at this time of the level of commitment. Resolutions come with, they are a, if they are written and formal, they are the same as a motion that's been passed, they are a formal recognition of the commitment of a city. And I think that we need to know what type of commitment we're looking for. I think that's where the council is struggling on this issue, is we haven't been given the tools at this time of what is actually being asked for from the city. I know that you're wanting a commitment, but I think that we still don't know what type of commitment you're asking for, and.
And let me add to that, Earlene, and with Steve specifically, because he and I have had some conversations, Denny. I think this group is willing to commit to take this study down the road, further look at it, seriously look at it. There's some questions, some unanswered questions as to how will the county be involved, how will tourism be involved, and things like that. I think we're ready, as a group, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, I sent an email out last week, we've had some discussions amongst ourselves, I don't think we're ready to make a hard commitment, saying, "Yes, we will definitely do this, we're going to commit to it today." But I think the group is ready to make a commitment that we're going to, we're going to give it a serious look, and try our best to make it happen. We're not looking to kick it down the road, as Tim said, we're not looking to, to dismiss anything. I think we, I think we need more information from other entities to, to give a solid yes. But I think we're, we're, we're ready as a group to say, "Yes, we, we are committed to this project," without, without saying, "Yes, we, we're legally, we're going to legally make a commitment today." Does that make sense? And is that, is what, is what, you know, what, what, what's your reply to that? I mean, as far as.
What do you need from us, Steve?
Yes. I know you've got an October deadline.
Well, actually, the October deadline is Samira's.
Okay.
Because the way the budget cycle works is the House presents their budget first, and if the appropriation's in there, then I have to do nothing, but if it's not, then I have to file a separate appropriation request.
Okay.
But I don't see anything in their feasibility study that's truly alarming. Sure, you've got some startup costs, but by what year does it break even? Year four, you break even.
In best, best scenario, that's, you know, that's.
Yeah, and just, for some, I've seen their study, and I think there's some other opportunities that we haven't even talked about. So I think you can truly look at this as worst-case scenario financially. And again, I can't promise you any appropriation from the state, because that's the way the budget process works. I'll tell you, I was giving my very best, but whatever I'm able to do, and how much our quest, mayor, may be up to you and a discussion with Judge Henderson, it could be for the whole project, or it could be a portion of the project. But anything we're able to receive enhances their feasibility study.
Right.
So I don't know why there's great hesitancy on not accepting their financial feasibility So I don't know why there's great hesitancy on not accepting their financial feasibility study as a worst case, and to say, let's move forward with this project.
Well, I think.
It's hard with the resolution you're talking about, it's hard for me to sell this at state level and say, well, they want this, but we're not sure whether we're going to do this project or not. Then if we're not, don't waste my time, don't waste their time.
I get that.
It's a worst-case scenario, we get it, and then we say, we don't want it.
Well, tell me if I'm wrong, a resolution is just a firm commitment to do. Right?
I guess what Bill is saying, is it legally binding?
It's the same as a motion in written form.
I mean, you look at the definition of a resolution, and it's a commitment, a firm commitment or decision to do.
It is, it is, it is. It's the same as a motion, it's in written form, it's a more formal statement to an outside source, this is what the city of Litchfield is going to be doing.
And my formal motion was to resolve to pursue the research. That's the commitment we would be making through this resolution.
And if that, I mean, if that's your motion to make, you can, of course, if it's seconded in their support, I'm not here to cast a vote, I'm just here to say what a resolution's legal consequences are.
And we do have a motion that was put forth and seconded on the floor right now at this point.
And therefore, it would need to be voted upon.
Yes.
But I'm just saying, with the wording that you've proposed, that would commit the city to researching the project. So that's the legal repercussions of what you've proposed, and that's on the floor with a second.
And that's basically what I've said, is that we would commit to moving forward with it, again, with input from other entities. I don't think anybody can expect the city to take this on solely. Worst-case scenario, Steve goes to bat for us, he doesn't get anything, that changes the complexion considerably.
Yeah, that resolution won't commit us.
Steve gets ten million?
If he.
We kiss him in the mouth.
But he needs that to sell it, and I understand.
I understand that, too. I'm just saying, with what's on the floor, the only thing we're saying is, the city commits to researching the project. That's what I'm saying. I'm just saying what's on the floor. I don't know if that's enough to apply for the grant.
Is it enough, Steve, yes or no? It's not?
And that's what I'm trying to stress. I don't know what that resolution needs to contain versus what you all are willing to pass tonight. So whatever you pass that's on the floor, we're just saying, we're willing to research. I don't know if that's what Steve needs or not.
He said, no, it's not. So I'll rescind that motion.
And this is some of the discussions we've had, is, you know, I don't think the city is, I don't think this group, let me say that, is willing to take this on solely as a city project. Some others that have spoken tonight have mentioned it as a community project. And I think.
It needs to be a county and city, it needs to be the whole county involved.
I think there's places to look with county being involved, I've talked to Judge Henderson some, he has committed somewhat, he hasn't formally committed, but we've talked about what they could do.
Brittany, didn't you say the entities that were involved when you first started?
Yes, so obviously the city, the county, the healthcare foundation, and then Litchfield Tourism.
Shouldn't.
That have had conversations that we feel will make a firm commitment, but we don't know exactly what those.
Steve, let me ask you a question. What if we would pass that, if we referred it back to the county and the city on the ballot, you know?
Put it on a ballot to be voted on by the people of the whole community.
Senator, have you gone to the county and asked them if they would like to pursue this as far as you applying for the grant on their part, too? Because this is going to be, I mean, yes, it's located in the city of Litchfield, but we are also a part of Grayson County, and they will be contributing to this project. So could you approach it from a Grayson County perspective instead of a city of Litchfield?
Mr. Mayor, can we make this motion contingent upon getting monies?
Legally, I'm.
Yes, legally, you could make it contingent. I mean, you can put those specifications in the resolution.
All right, here's what I'll do then, I'll make a motion.
But before you do that, let's talk about, are you making it contingent on monies that Steve gets, monies that Tourism County?
Yes.
Hospital Board puts in? Are you looking at it as a whole package?
As a whole package.
An individual, okay.
Unless Steve says, that won't be good enough.
Well, if you would, allow me to answer Councilwoman Hagecraft's question. I have not talked to Kevin personally, I have not talked to Tourism personally. I have not had any involvement in this in the last couple of weeks. I knew the budget's coming up, the process again, seventy-eight days away. So I have information that I've received, for the most part, it's what I heard tonight.
Well, that's what we've heard, too. And that's why we, I mean, I'll speak for myself, that's why I'm struggling. We want this, we need this, we're thinking long-term. The building, completely feasible, we can make that happen with our entities, we can get the building. We're looking at long-term financial responsibilities for everything included from here on out, because this is going to outlive the majority of us. We don't, we're concerned about the financial, I don't want to say insecurity, I don't want to say security, but what kind of financial impact is this going to have on our citizens who live here? You know, is this, because I appreciate the financial model, I would cross my fingers that everything in that is going to play out accordingly. However, I have major questions and concerns about that, just like any other startup business. But is it going to get to a point to where in order not to put a financial burden on the city, are we going to have to in turn increase taxes on our citizens in order to make ends meet? Can we do this, plus everything else that we've wanted to do? We've put more money towards roads, we've put more money towards sidewalks, we bought a new fire truck, you know, are we still going to be able to do all of those things and in turn pay for this without struggling? Because I don't want this to come back on our citizens, especially the city of Litchfield, when it's going to be used by the entire county. So, you know, a conversation that needs to be had by someone other than me is, if it gets to a point where we have to increase taxes for our citizens, is the county going to increase taxes for their citizens, too? Because they're going to be using it just as much as the city of Litchfield. Those are concerns that we have talked about, and we needed a little bit more time, other than, you know, an email or a notification last week, that we have to talk about this today and make a decision by the end of October. I mean, I know that everybody got the information out as best as they could, but in order for us to make financially sound decisions for our community, we've got to have a little more details.
I certainly understand that, but we kind of have a thing in Frankfurt, if you want the project to die, send it to a committee or a task force, because that's usually what happens. I'd ask you, what if this actually allows you to reduce taxes? You know, I've heard the same arguments this past six or seven years about us reducing personal income tax statewide. People said it's going to take money away from our schools, take money away from healthcare, when in fact, it's done just the opposite. It's created more jobs. A lot of the economic impact we're seeing right now, the growth we're seeing, is a direct result of that reduction in income tax. You realize as a result of that, we're putting over fifteen hundred dollars a year back in the average family's pockets. Now, you've got an issue with losing some occupational revenue with Bill Cheese leaving. What's your plans to get it back? It's got to be getting more jobs. How are you going to do that? Are you going to be competitive for everybody else in the world? What can you offer that another community doesn't? You know, I speak on behalf of Mead County, Brandenburg, you know what they've done, Nucor over there. I believe when Nucor was looking for a plant, they needed a thousand acres, and what Mead County have, and I'm giving you rough numbers here, was around five hundred acres. But what sold them was that community did what we call a nickel tax twice to raise money to build a college and career center that doesn't pay anything directly, but it was a major recruitment tool for Nucor, which the average salary is eighty thousand dollars. So what are you going to do to grow the industrial base here? What are we going to do to create more jobs? What are we going to do to help hospital recruit physicians? What can we offer that other communities don't? Again, worst-case scenario, I think you've seen tonight. That doesn't alarm me, because I'm more of an opposite somebody, as you grow jobs, that gives you more tax revenue, and helps mitigate that loss. But also, you know, we've taught very little about the health of the community, again, worse outcomes in the state. Now, we have a crisis of biblical proportion when it comes to healthcare. We're crushing working families with the cost of healthcare. We spend fourteen thousand dollars per capita on health to the United States. Next closest nation is Germany at eighty-five hundred, and China, our biggest trade competitor, is at a thousand dollars. We can't be competitive in the international market with the conspiracy of healthcare cost. I'm working on the project now to reduce our Medicaid program, which is in kind of a crisis because of what's happened, reduce Medicaid expenditures by twenty percent by 2030. And how do we do that? Reduce the bureaucracy with the system, but also focus on improving the health of the population. Again, the amount of physical activity we have in this community, particularly seeing is paltry. So all these sayings are kind of worked together in a silo, but I truly don't see as much risk as what's anticipated. I think the biggest threat, the biggest risk, and Councilman Buck, you've already alluded to this, we never take the time to measure the cost of doing nothing. And if we did, we would be alarmed by it, we should be alarmed by it. To your point, I think this is an investment in the community that's worthwhile. Thank you.
Steve.
We have done things over and over.
Sure.
And expected a different result. That is defined as insanity. If it's time, we think a different way.
I think this may help give you guys a better understanding. Jared, would you mind coming over and standing beside me for a minute? I was just kidding. I think you guys should realize that there's been other entities involved in this.
The department said you need a stool.
I get that a lot. But I think you guys need to be aware, nobody's going to commit until it's started. I think once there's a starting point, there's going to be a minimum of five million dollars involved from outside the city of Litchfield, I mean, you guys. So that's five million dollars from other sources. If we can get a resolution and get this, it allows the senator to possibly get a significant amount. It's possible we could even fund this whole thing. It's possible, but I think we're looking at a minimum of five million just from other sources. That's not counting the property that was donated for a half-million-dollar piece of property. It'd be a shame to let this go by. We're not going to have an opportunity in Frankfurt like this very much longer. This may be the only chance we get, so I think we need to take advantage of it. The five million dollars does not include naming rights, donations that people want to make, it does not include anything the city may want to throw in. So there's a lot of money out there, and this may not come around again, and it'd be a shame to lose this opportunity, again, especially since we have a good chance of having the whole thing funded if it comes about. Thanks.
Thanks, Denny. Tim, you were saying?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I was just saying that this community, as Steve has mentioned, and I didn't realize how many times that this project has been put forth between this body and other bodies, but we have made choices time and time again to not do, not build this facility, to not do the things for our constituents. There is a definition of that, and that's insanity. We have to think a different way. We have to look at our younger people and our seniors and look at the services we can provide them and the intangibles that we get from doing this, which is the increased tourism, the businesses that we can draw, the executives that we can recruit, the doctors we can recruit.
I don't think anybody discounts that. I think there's a level of the unknown that the council, and they should look at it, they should be, even our most, even our best wants still have to be looked at and considered. Is this feasible or not? We had a feasibility study, and I don't, I still don't look at that feasibility study as the bottom line. I don't think we can. But on the other hand, I think everybody on this council is willing to say, this is, we do want this, we do want to pursue this. Am I speaking out of turn for you guys?
No.
I agree with that, wholeheartedly, Mr. Mayor.
I just think there's some reluctance to the city taking it on as a sole entity. That's where I think the biggest holdback is.
I see Ryan, and Ryan, do you have any comments or concerns through tourism? Or want to ask any questions?
Denny said it best, I believe he summarized it the best, I believe. There is other money outside of this council that is, no certain dollar amount has been committed, but there's been talk and discussion. Tourism, for one, has budgeted for this for the last two years. It's on our budget. We're definitely going to participate in this. To what level, I can't tell you, but it's going to be substantial. I do believe it drives tourism to Grayson County, Litchfield primarily. I think it would be a wonderful facility. It comes to a point, as Tim said, there just comes a time, you got to go, and it's time. This is our chance, let's not let it pass us up.
Thank you, Aaron.
Guys?
Edwin McKinney, I don't live in the city, I live really, really close, but of course, I'm interested in the city, I guess, suppose for my county resident or healthcare interest. But I'm just an innocent bystander over here, and I, what I observe is, I think you're ready to do what Steve needs, we just need some wording in your motion. And I think with some contingencies or with some help from Steve, you could probably get that motion right on the table that would alleviate your concerns about being the sole provider. And if you could just help him with the wording that you need to get to support to go forward, I think you could do that and not step on your concerns. I believe that exists, if you could just.
I think you're right.
We want to be on the right side of history here.
So, Tim, you started to make a resolution earlier.
Yes, sir.
To offer a resolution earlier.
I want to be as plain as I can. I resolve that we move to pursue the building of a health and wellness center in the city of Litchfield.
I second it.
We have a motion for a resolution by Tim, we have a second by Mr. Cockrell. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I haven't voted yet. Could you repeat that title of that resolution back to me? Did anybody write it down?
It was his motive, I thought he was reading from his writing.
I am. I move that we resolve to pursue the building of a health and wellness center in the city of Litchfield.
Aye.
That work for you, Steve?
That's moving forward.
That's as strong as I can make it.
Okay, so, let me back up, we had five ayes, am I correct?
Six, I'm correct.
Did Terry, did you go in? Okay, so it's unanimous. Will that suffice for you, Steve? Okay. And obviously, I know there's some people here, the feasibility study doesn't, and we've addressed tennis and all that, you know, those are things that I don't think the feasibility study. the feasibility study is concrete, but, you know, that allows us also to look at some different layouts, different configurations. I don't think anybody is opposed to that either. Obviously, we want to get the most bang for our buck, but we also want to do what's needed in the community.
So I just wanted to clarify. So in our study, the recommendation on tennis was specific to a dedicated indoor tennis center. It wasn't a multipurpose. So if tennis can utilize Teraflex floors or, you know, floors that are meant for basketball and volleyball, we can model that into our financial model. The only thing that we addressed in the study was a dedicated indoor tennis center. And we said maybe it has a phase two.
Tennis only type surface, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So you can reconfigure in with a multipurpose?
The way the courts are laid out, it's enough clear span space potentially for, I don't know how many tennis courts, we'll have to go back and look at the CAD drawing to figure it out, but tennis could potentially be incorporated. It would just be, it wouldn't be tennis-specific flooring. It would be, you know, more of like a Teraflex flooring that's meant for basketball, volleyball that could be used for multipurpose.
Okay. And sir, we have a small business here that does wonderful things in our community that does have a health and wellness center, do some aspects of that. We don't want to compete as a city with them. Can you eliminate those duplications?
That wasn't our intention when we did it all. So those aren't actually in the model currently. The only thing that's shown in there would be sports training and, you know, you may mix in weights as a part of the sports training, but the opportunity is for additional stuff is there, but if you don't want to duplicate them, that's, it's not in there currently. So it's not currently projected.
We appreciate our small business. We don't want to compete with them on a fair playing ground.
That's why we don't usually include fitness, because there's a lot of them that are around and we don't want to duplicate that offering there.
Coach Vincent, you agree, disagree? Want to comment?
Well, I had so much backlash over my visits in the past, so I decided to stay back. But I want to thank our tennis community for showing up. It was not to my knowledge that it was not presented to the feasibility or other people in our community that it was solely tennis. Now, it has always been multifunctional and we sold it on day one as far as volleyball, footsaw, pickleball, so, and I see some odds up there, so I just want to stand and be corrected. And I'm a thirty-year veteran of PE teacher and stand on my health background with a health education minor. I'm all for this, but I don't want to be overlooked as far as in the value of what tennis brings to the wholesome community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your program and what you do in the community.
Before, I didn't want to interrupt your applause. Applause, I'm sorry. From a standpoint of the resolution itself, I just don't, I want to make sure it's what you need. For a more formal statement from the city, does it need to be a written formal resolution that the council gives approval for the mayor to sign? Instead of just being recorded within our minutes, does it need to be a written formal resolution?
I appreciate that.
I think that would be appropriate. So I would suggest a motion that allows the mayor to sign a written resolution that is based on the resolution that was previously voted upon and passed. So basically, that's just a vote so the mayor can sign a document which formalizes that resolution.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Let's let Brittany speak and maybe our other council will be back by the time we need to do it.
Just a quick clarification. The feasibility study is a recommendation. It doesn't mean that's what has to happen. It's a recommendation based on what they know from doing this and looking at return on investment and how it will be able to be financially viable. If we want to make some modifications to that, if the city wants to make those changes, that can happen. And also, I've mentioned this before, the Grayson County Healthcare Foundation is supporting of the project. And based on our conversations and a motion we've already had made, we'll financially support the project. That amount, we'll have further conversations on what that looks like, but there will be some support there. Thank you all for working on this.
Thank you for paying for all of it.
I think it'll be great for our community.
Yeah, and at some point in the near future, we probably need to sit down with Brittany, with Ryan, with tourism, with Judge Henderson and people like that, and start moving toward what kind of commitments can be made from those entities. I think that's probably the proper thing to do next. Steve's going to bring home the bacon. I've got faith in him.
We've got a very short timeframe.
Right.
But the more we can formalize those commitments, the more it helps our case.
Okay. Clayton gets back in, we'll do that formal thing where I can sign it and it'll be a I want to say we appreciate Brittany and Danny and them for putting so much time into this and this effort, so we appreciate y'all. We do appreciate everyone here. I understand the folks from the tennis side of it, and they have showed up and showed out every time we've discussed this at any length. I know there has been a lot of footwork put in by the gentlemen that did the feasibility study, Senator Maris, Danny, Brittany. I'm going to say, Danny, that Brittany's done the bulk of it. We appreciate everybody. I'm just kidding. But we do... Especially Danny. We do appreciate you guys coming out. Personally, I wish we had crowds like this at every council meeting to show the interest in things we do, but... Bear with us just a couple of minutes. I've never had to call timeout at a council meeting before, so...
Should we do a formal recess for a few minutes or...
Hopefully he'll be back by the time we...
Anybody got any good jokes?
Danny, I know Danny does.
Anybody see old Tony's game the other night?
I got a good story on Danny, but I don't know if he'd let me tell it.
Hey, those kids are learning.
Yeah, no, it's not, it's, well, it's G. It's G.
There he comes.
Water pills suck now.
While Clayton's getting seated, the next thing we'll do, Arlene, is vote to make the resolution, a formal resolution that can be signed by me.
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to entertain a motion to make that resolution, a formal resolution that could be signed by me as mayor.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Tim. Do we have a second by George? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, guys. Any other discussion for the health plex? Any at all before we carry on to other business?
Thank you, guys. Great new day in our community.
All right, next up, we're going to ask David Roof to come and talk to us. He and I had talked a few days ago and just to kind of give us an update of some things going on with utilities department.
I stopped the mayor the other day and asked him if I could stop by here and just say hi. Let everybody introduce myself. I took Dwight's job and just kind of wanted to let everybody know that if you run into somebody who has a problem, issue, I'd wholeheartedly just give me a call as I would read it on Facebook in a couple of weeks. So I'm going to give you these cards and if you have anything. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Yeah, I got your number.
David, appreciate everything you do.
Appreciate you.
So I didn't really, I wasn't really prepared for a speech or anything, but we've been working on our water loss. We've hired a guy from Kevin Leonard to come in and do a water loss survey. That produced about thirty-nine water leaks that was underground that we couldn't, that never did make to the surface. So our crews, they've been working. They've got them all fixed, but I think ten so far. There's some up around the square and some other blacktop that we, but they have fixed forty-two leaks so far. And we've cut our water loss from fifty-six percent down to twenty-five percent in August. In January, it was running six hundred and eighty-five gallons a minute and we've got it down to two sixty-eight point five. So we're continuing to work on it. We've got the best group of guys and gals working for Litchfield Utilities you'd ask for. They've done a really good job and I'm proud of them. So if you see them out, tell them what kind of job they're doing.
Well, we appreciate you and thank you. And I know Sabrina said she was going to keep you jumping.
She does, yes, yes. But if you need anything, feel free to give me a call. Office is always open, anytime, day or night, on call. So thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
All right, before we leave visitors, anyone else here to address the council? All right, next item on the agenda is approval of August 2025 financial statements. If there are no questions about that for Sabrina, I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve those.
I make a motion, we accept.
Motion by Clayton. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we go down to unfinished business. First item there is vacancy for the Board of Adjustments. We had interviewed some folks recently, not real recent, but in the last little bit. One of the gentlemen that interviewed, we felt like did a good job. I'd like to recommend that we install him on the Board of Adjustments at this time is Jacob Cockrell.
I make a motion, we install him.
My second.
Motion by Clayton, second by George. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then, next item there about the EDC board, we will table that and we'll move back to that at a later meeting. Any other unfinished business? Billy?
No, sir.
Terry?
No.
Tudy?
No, sir.
Clayton?
No.
George?
No, sir.
Tim?
No, sir. Thank you.
I just want to make a clarification on the vacancy of the Board of Adjustments. That will be to finish out the term of Teresa Clemmons.
Yes.
Is that her name? Yes, Teresa. I didn't want to mistake that. I thought it was right. So I just wanted to get that as part of the minutes, so I'll have that.
How much longer is left on the term?
I'm not sure.
I can take it here. Her term is up one-one of twenty-nine, so it's a fairly new term. So this year was when hers started, so it's pretty much going to be the full term.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Lori. Anybody else at this table? Arlene, Tyler?
No, sir.
David?
No, sir.
All right. Now to new business. Billy?
No, sir.
Terry?
No.
Tudy?
No, sir.
Yes, for Public Works. Out on Clay Street, coming down Clay Street there, a gentleman called me and wanted me to come over and look at it. There's a big ditch down there that is, they're having a lot of drainage problems with. You probably know where it's at, Tyler. It's on Clay Street as you come down from the box factory and then come down Clay Street there on the right, there's a big ditch back there and they're having some flooding issues back there that even takes it over toward 259 North there at the depot. But it's right there, Mr. Keith said they was having a lot of problems, especially when we get a lot of rain, but the ditch evidently needs to be dug out there. It would run from, right there on Mill Street, turn on Clay Street and go up there and it would, it's a pretty long ditch out there. And he'd just like somebody to come by and look at it and see if they can clean it out, dig it out, maybe do something with it because it floods them right there in that area.
Okay, I'll talk with Aaron tomorrow and Wesley and see if we can get the crew out there to look at it and see what needs to be done.
Okay, appreciate it. That's it.
George?
No, sir.
Tim?
No, sir.
Lori?
No.
Arlene?
No.
Anybody else? We'll go to other business. There will be a Solid Waste Committee meeting on November third at 5:00 PM before our next council meeting. Kelsey is offering a four-hour planning and zoning virtual training course on October 29th at 9:00 AM. Please let Tyler or Lori know if you'd like to sign up for that. And the next chamber luncheon will be on November 13th at noon. Please let Lori know, know later than noon on Monday, November 10th, if you plan to attend. And if there's no other business to attend to, I'll entertain a motion in a second to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion by Clayton. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, folks.